Okay, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to kick off this meeting June 15th, 2021. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. And I don't remember who's turning it in, so I guess I'll just pick James.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, James. At this time, I think we should excuse Councilmember Joe Schmidt.
I move to excuse Councilmember Schmidt. Is that okay?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Everybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Joe, you're excused from here now. Donna, would you like to do a roll call, please?
Yes, I would be happy to. Councilmember Feas.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
President.
Councilmember Bode.
Here.
Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
And Councilmember Inesco.
Here.
Okay. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, let's move on to any councilmembers have a board report to share.
I don't have a board, but I'm going to be planning, I'm going to be attending the AWC conference on next week, the comfort of my home.
Yeah, I'm going to try to do that, too.
So, looking forward to that. It starts Monday night and Friday morning.
I'd like to share just one little thing. I was at an MTA board meeting today, Mason Transit. And a few months back, I think I reported that the parking rides were getting close to being open, right? And they're waiting on security cameras and some lighting at both the Shelton Matlock and the Pear Orchard. And they're also waiting to put in the electrical hookup for the charger car, which they have, but they don't want to put it in until they have cameras. So, and they told me that they're still on schedule, so I don't know. But anyway, also, they're doing blacktop out at Pickering Road. I don't know if you've been out there, but that's been all tore up. They're doing blacktop out there next week, and some improvements out at the one at Cole Road as well. So, anyway, and Belfair. So...
Can I ask a question?
Uh, yeah.
Um, in that meeting, when they were reporting out, did they talk about any communication with the community around, like, just kind of what we're waiting for? Because there are a lot of folks, you know, that are wondering.
Right. I don't know that answer, but I can approach the management out there tomorrow, maybe, and ask them to put something out. Oh, and by the way, I forgot to mention that we hired a new general manager for Mason Transit. Her name is Amy Asher. She's going to be starting around the 12th, I think, of July. Very experienced. She's got like seven or eight years, but she's very good at what she does. And everybody out there is looking forward to getting her on board. So, with that, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
Go move.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're going to have a presentation tonight by Mr. Troy Nichols to present the 2021 legislative session wrap-up.
Do we see?
So, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Troy Nichols. And would you please state your name and how old you are today?
He only turned 30 once, so you gotta make the most of it.
So, Troy, you may see a piece of candy on your thing there.
Right here, yeah.
This is birthday cake flavored candy.
Perfect. Just what I wanted.
All right. Just in case Julie forgets to buy you one tonight.
That's, yeah, I'll remind her.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and council. For the record, Troy Nichols, I'm your government relations person in Olympia with Philip Spurgis, Government Relations, and city manager at Knighton asked me to come and kind of give a wrap-up presentation on the legislative session and how we did. And we have a good story to tell, so I'm excited about the opportunity tonight to kind of walk through some of the successes and maybe start some of the dialogue about how we, you know, start planning for 2022, because it's just around the corner. It's already the middle of June. So, with that, I'll get going. Like I just said, we're going to talk a little bit about kind of the session dynamics. It was a unique one, for sure. And then talk about some of our accomplishments, both in the transportation budget, capital budget. And then we'll talk about the rest of the interim and kind of the preview for heading into 2022. And then, we don't have to save questions to the end. If anybody wants to interrupt or have questions for me during the presentation, please do so, because I think that's probably the most valuable part of all of this, so. You, most of you know this already, but just to kind of go quickly, what we were up against when the legislature convened in January, you know, the makeup of the legislature is unchanged, basically, from the last, the last biennium with Democrats holding solid majorities in both chambers. The numbers remain the same. Governor Inslee was obviously just re-elected to his third term. So, the dynamics of the building are 35th Legislative Delegation in particular was unchanged, and so, a lot of familiarity with the process. But unlike previous sessions, we were all virtual this session. So, all the committee hearings, all the floor sessions were on Zoom. I'm happy to be wearing slacks with my jacket and tie for the first time tonight in a long time, so, hooray for pants. But just, I mean, you guys saw the news coverage. There were a lot fewer bills. The legislative leadership focused on their four big priorities, which, obviously, COVID response, they did a lot in the areas of police reform, social justice, and then, of course, focused on the economic recovery. And with that, spending some of the federal dollars that came down from the federal government in COVID response. But we, in spite of all the challenges, we had a lot of success. And at the top, it starts with our legislative delegation. You know, we benefit from all three of them working closely together. And when we have priorities from our community that we communicate with them, they're able to have maximum success. So, we were able to get that latecomer proviso in the budget, which is a big deal, I know, to your city manager, but a big deal to the community, too, in the transportation budget. That's a $2.2 million transfer of accounts to satisfy the outstanding balance on that. And then, we were also very successful in our capital budget request. The two main priorities that we've talked about over the last several years ended up being fully funded, both requests, and I'll talk in detail about all three of these. So, in the transportation budget, there's a lot of words here, but the bottom line is, with COVID and the lockdown and everything that was going on, there weren't a lot of folks riding transit or public, you know, facilities. There weren't a lot of people traveling and buying gas, so there was a pretty substantial decline in the revenues that were available in the transportation budget this biennium. It was almost a 10% drop in the current biennium, which expires at the end of the month. And then the projected revenues for this next biennium were down 6.5%, and it was about a 5.5% overall four-year decline in anticipated revenue since the pre-pandemic February 2020 forecast. As a result, traditionally, we've been able to secure funds through our legislative delegation, direct member requests for projects. We've been successful in a couple of big ones over the years. But legislative leadership and the committee chair said right off the bat, there aren't going to be any member request projects in the traditional sense in the transportation budget this time. And despite, you know, that, the transportation budget ultimately passed with very strong bipartisan support, 90 to 6 in the House, 41 to 8 in the Senate. So, there was general agreement on the work that the chairs did in terms of prioritizing existing revenues and projects that were already going. And then you've seen the media coverage of some of the big sort of priorities of the governor's office, the cap and trade program, that bill was passed, and along with the low-carbon fuel standard that required refineries to produce low-carbon fuels in Washington State. Both of those bills passed, however, with the understanding that there would be some future date, a statewide transportation package, and that was tied to at least a 5% increase in the gas tax. And the governor vetoed those provisions. So, a little bit of political and legal controversy in his actions in doing that, just because there's some question about his authority to line item, phrase and words, phrases and words in the budget, not just, or in bills, not full sections, which is what the Constitution says that he has the authority to do. So, that's going to complicate things down the road. And then, at the last iteration of the transportation package, at least on the Senate side, it was about a, almost an $18 billion revenue package, of which, there's about $5.2 billion, this is over a 10-year period, in revenues from the new carbon tax on the cap and trade program. So, all of that was swirling around. But despite that, we were able to get a proviso in the budget that, basically, as many of you are very much aware, there's a latecomer agreement with the State Patrol and the City of Shelton in existence, out by the Police Academy. It's been in existence for several years, and it basically assigns a fee to pay back the $2.2 million to extend the water main across the highway over to the academy. So, any economic development that takes place out in those parcels, they're going to be assessed an additional fee on top of everything else. And it was really stifling a lot of economic development and opportunity that we had in one of the few remaining areas in the UGA for future growth. We were successful last session in getting this proviso included in the supplemental transportation budget, but unfortunately, the governor vetoed that, and he was concerned that there would be some 18th Amendment violation, because the motor vehicle fund is bound to, by the 18th Amendment to the state constitution, to pay for roads and highways and infrastructure. And so, we worked with our delegation and the governor's office this go-around and changed the language a little bit to satisfy those 18th Amendment concerns. We found $2.2 million in the waste tire removal account that would satisfy the outstanding costs that are associated with that latecomer agreement. And really have to compliment the governor's staff, Drew Shirk, his legislative director, and Debbie Driver, who's his transportation policy advisor. The delegation, Jeff and I got on the phone with her and Drew early in session, had a very good conversation and talked about the issue, how we wanted to come to a solution. And at the end of the day, the governor's office basically said, let's figure out a way to make this happen. And Debbie and I worked together with the delegation throughout the session, and we got language that satisfied the governor's office that didn't draw a veto this time. So, now, we're just waiting, the budget will actually officially take effect, you know, once the new biennium starts. And then, in the proviso, it requires the State Patrol, after the transfer from the account, satisfy the debt occurs, it requires State Patrol and the city to meet after those funds are transferred. Been working with the governor's office, she says they're going to formulate a plan, and they'll be in touch with us as soon as they figure out kind of the nuts and bolts of how they're going to make this work. But stay tuned, because that's going to happen soon. So, that's a, that's a big, big win for the community, big win for the city. Capital budget, so, you know, when the pandemic first hit, we had the first revenue forecast after the shutdown last March. Initial revenue projections were $8.8 billion reduction, the sky was falling. And so, with all those pressures on the operating budget, the capital budget tends to be sort of the funding source to help fill those gaps, and they do fund sweeps in different accounts from the capital budget. And then, once, every subsequent revenue forecast, however, got better and better in terms of the fiscal picture for the state. And then, by the time the March revenue forecast rolled around, we're actually ended up on the operating side, having more money than anticipated for the current, or the next biennium than what we thought we were going to have in February of last year. So, the capital budget was one that was, you can't get much more bipartisan than that. It passed unanimously in both chambers, it was not controversial. The bond capacity was higher. We originally were fear, because of the revenue forecasts were so dire, that the bond model would show a decline in the available bonds for the capital budget. That ended up not being the case. And it was quite literally one of the largest capital budgets in the state history, when you combine that with the federal funds. And in a case of good timing, you know, we submitted through our delegation two capital budget requests, the well-won water main and the reclaimed water tank project. These have been on our list in the past. I have to compliment Jeff and Mary and city staff for putting these requests together. These were not funded through the traditional general obligation bond program where local and community projects are funded typically, pork for lack of a better word. These were funded with, in, through the Department of Commerce with $113 million in federal COVID relief funds that were earmarked for water and infrastructure improvements. So, we did our work ahead of time, and we were able to have valid legitimate projects that fit this funding when it came down to the federal government. So, we were in the right place in the right time, and we ended up getting both of them plugged in. $2.05 million for one project in the normal capital budget is a lot. The average local community project in the capital budget, I think, is around $600,000. So, the fact that we're able to secure these federal funds by having our ducks in a row and being ready was kind of a big deal. So, again, thanks to the delegation, thanks to city staff for having these project requests dialed up and tuned in. So, moving ahead to the interim, here's, again, some of the dynamics we're going to be looking at for next, this interim and then for next session. Will there be an overall transportation package? And then, if that's the case, will they be asking for local and community projects in the transportation side? What's going to be the fate of that carbon tax revenue right now? So, the cap and trade bill is taking effect, but it's not earmarked for transportation projects right now, because that section, the linkage to the normal transportation budget was vetoed by the governor. So, will we be able to benefit from a potential revenue package down the road? It remains to be seen. Will they ask for member request projects through the supplemental transportation budget in 2022? Those are unknowns at this point. So, we'll be working with our delegation on the best way to address that as we head into 2022. Capital budget, they ended up, you know, initially, we thought, because there was so much bond capacity available, that there was going to be 150 to 200 million in general obligation bonds that were left over for the supplemental. But when both chambers ended up buying each other's outstanding projects, we were left with just 82 million. So, that's less than $2 million per legislative district, and we don't have any four-year institutions, or a lot of state government buildings in the 35th Legislative District, so those tend to attract the most, particularly in the supplemental year. So, I think the point is, is that capital budget dollars are going to be limited. I know the delegation did get a couple of local, smaller local projects through the traditional process in the capital budget. If there are smaller dollar projects that are priorities for the community, we'll need to talk about those down the road. And then, the budget did leave about $1 billion in federal COVID money left to spend in the out years. And so, that's sort of sitting there off to the side, and how will they distribute that? Is it going to be on the operating side? Will it be on the capital budget side? So, still a lot of unknowns. But again, I think it was a very, very successful session. I tried to talk to Jeff about changing my compensation to a commission base, but his cell phone gave out when I broached that subject, and so we didn't get that. But no, it was a very successful year, and a lot of planning went into that, and it doesn't happen by accident. I think, again, the hard work of the delegation and staff really made a shine in this legislative session, which wasn't all rosy and not always a lot of good news this last session, so. With that, be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
I just want to say, great job. I seem to remember, last time you briefed us, you said, don't get excited about anything next year.
Right.
And here we go with all these programs that you brought to it. It's just a great job, and our delegation did a great job, and I bet other counties and cities where state had you.
Well, it was, yeah, I mean, it is about managing expectations, but I think as the economy opened back up a little bit and the revenue picture improved, we were in the right place at the right time to secure these victories. The latecomer proviso, that was, I'm still very happy that we're able to get that, because, you know, if you would have told me at the end of the 2020 session that we would be back and we would actually be successful this time, I might have looked at you a little sideways. But again, I think the change in the tone in the governor's office was really helpful. We worked through it with a little bit different staff this time, and the end result is, we don't have, we're not hamstrung by that anymore. So, that's kind of a big deal.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So, we have a shovel-ready project as a community, sitting on the Highway 8, 101 interchange. We know the transportation plan has been done there and funded, you know, some years ago. Was there, has there been any spark of conversation of, you know, conversations moving that forward?
Not sure if that was, I know we did submit two projects, Jeff, that weren't successful, because they didn't take any member requests. It was, you know, the Wallace-Neeland Shelton Springs Road intersection. We were able to secure money for that a while back. And then, the Gateway Project, but that's on railroad. I don't know that that's part of what you're asking about.
Right, yeah. No, this is definitely 13th County, but it's in the 35th.
Oh, okay.
And it's a huge, that bottleneck there is a huge issue for economic development.
Right.
Same where Belfair has been dealing with their, you know, thing. At the same time that that project was, you know, planned and fun for the planning, that project down the south end here was also funded, and the planning was done at the very same year. So, we really need to see over these coming years, funding for the south end, so we can open up for economic development across the whole county.
I think as we start to work with the delegation in the fall, if that's something that the commission wants to prioritize, and it's shovel-ready, that stands to reason that be successful. And selfishly, if somebody lives on Steamboat, off a Steamboat Island road, I would love to see the congestion there cleaned up myself, so.
The feds might be really interested in funding a project like that.
Well, and matching funds are a big deal, too. You stand to be more successful if you bring in resources from other pots of money, so that would factor into our decision.
I have 13 counties that have a, could be selected.
Definitely.
I just want to say, thank you so very much. I remember Jeff's face when the phone call came in, the bike, and he was down, I think. He said, "Huge." He was so excited. So, thank you.
You should have taken a picture.
I should have. But thank you for all your hard work, and you cannot go anywhere.
No, I'm here as long as you guys will have me. It's a labor of love, I enjoy it. You know, obviously, my wife is from this community, her law practice is here, I have a lot of, you know, I appreciate this town, I have a lot of friends here, and it's, and, you know, it's something that kind of plays to my strengths. I used to staff the capital budget back when I worked in the legislature, and so, just using that experience to help the community is, it's a big benefit. I like it.
And I'd just like to say that I don't think we would have been nearly as successful as we were this session without Troy representing our interest in Olympia, and appreciate all the work that he did, turning my harebrained schemes into something concrete that we can count on going forward, so.
I look forward to going to the ribbon cutting out there when we start to get some projects going out there. It's going to be exciting, so.
Anything else for Troy? All right, thank you, Troy, for your presentation.
Thanks, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yep.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
All right. Now, we're going to move on to our general public comment. Do we have anyone interested tonight?
We do, we have Catherine Price.
Catherine, do you have to keep this on?
It's up to you.
Who's her name again?
Catherine Price.
All right.
Hello, good evening. My name is Catherine Price, and I live in Shelton, Washington. I live at 603 South 9th Street. There's a block away from my house on the 9th and Turner. There's a cute little house that has a couple of very large signs on it. The messages on the signs, I'm not sure that if I say them, that you won't all, like, scream. So, the signs say, "Fuck Biden" in two-foot letters. There's two of them, and they're really big. They're on a thoroughfare, they're off Turner, there's a bus stop right there, there, there are a dozen reasons why this, I'm a free speech advocate, but I don't think this is free speech when it's on Turner like this. If it's on the side of a building downtown, we paint it over. If it's on the side of my fence, someone did it on my fence, we painted it, so the neighbors didn't have to look at it. This sign has been up for many months now, and for reasons of decency and community standards, even though it is a free speech issue, I think that it really challenges a lot of people's decency. And so, I don't know whether there's anything you can do about it. I know that you have some ordinances, you have a subsection offenses against public morals, and it discusses that a public place can be, you know, that that can be considered a public place, because it is where it is. So, if there are any standards that the city has in connection with printing obscenities on things, I wrote a letter to the Journal, and they wrote me back, and they said, "I can't print the F-word in the paper, so that will have to be changed, at least in order for me to print it. We can't print it in the paper, we paint over it if it's on one of our public buildings, we don't leave it on the sidewalk." I just don't think that it is appropriate that we ignore these signs. So, I know you guys can't really say or do anything, but I appreciate you thinking about whether or not, these are the kinds of messages that we want on a main street in Shelton. I don't think we do. So, anyway, that's my big break for today, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Donna, do we have anyone else?
No one else, but we should do a 30-second delay in case someone calls Jeff's phone, so I'll start that now.
Do a 30-second delay. Okay. We'll move on. We are recessing from our regular meeting to open a public hearing. Senior Planner Jason Dose is going to share information about the Shoreline Master Program periodic update.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's a little background. In 1971, Washington State Legislature enacted the Shoreline Management Act. The City of Shelton enacted its first Shoreline Master Program in 1975. We again updated it in 1995, and again in 2013, all three times with very substantial grants from the Department of Ecology. These regulations are required, they manage and dictate uses for what are considered our shoreline areas in city limits. That includes everything within 200 feet of Goldsboro Creek, Goose Lake, Oakland Bay, and a small portion of Johns Creek. In the county, we're also required to regulate for our UGA. In our UGA area, which is still county-regulated at this point, we have portions of Mill Creek and Island Lake as well. In August of last year, I approached the council with a grant from the Department of Ecology, a small grant, about a little under $17,000, which the council authorized acceptance of. That helped offset staff time in drafting the amended regulations, which I brought to the council earlier this year, January 15th, with strikeout and underlying copies of the proposed changes. Which, to kind of give you the shorthand version, what we're proposing has remained unchanged since that time, they're identical to what you saw in January. It includes an update to our wetland delineation and buffering guidance, which are, that's in 2164, chapter of our Shelton Municipal Code, that references currently the 2004 guidance by the state, and the state has updated their guidance to the 2014 level. So, this is arguably more of an administrative change. This is what all communities in Washington are going to, at least in Western Washington. They have differing typing and identification methodologies for Western Washington as compared to Eastern Washington, just because the water regimes are quite different. We are proposing minor amendments to several chapters. They're essentially all administrative, they update definitions, RCW citations, basically state law citations that may have been out of date. They update Chapter 5, the only update there is to remove a bunch of language we had put into our 2013 update to our Shoreline update to our Shoreline Master Program to address some of the shortcomings in our critical areas ordinance relative to wetlands while the state was updating the guidance. So now that gets removed. We're updating our critical areas ordinance, which will apply universally, but also to the shoreline areas. That's essentially it. What I've done for the last six months, as it were, is work with state agencies, many of our stakeholders, that includes our major shoreline property owners, including the Marina representatives, SPI, Sierra Pacific, Mankey Lumber, which they all own big pieces of property along our shoreline, spoken with representatives from the master builders, from, I said, state agencies, and walked them specifically through the proposed changes. We didn't have any concerns come up. I mean, as I said, they are quite boilerplate, but we are required to update these regulations to remain compliant with the Growth Management Act. So to that end, you know, we're, we're opening a public hearing here to, to take any comments or questions on the proposed changes, but I am basically making a motion that we hold the public hearing, provided there aren't any substantive comments or questions. We perform a first reading of the ordinance that's attached, and then I'll come back to you on the regular meeting on July sixth, hopefully for adoption with a finalized ordinance for you. And I welcome any questions you might have.
All right.
I have a question.
All right.
Jason, I'm curious, and maybe this isn't the right spot, but when I'm looking through, what happens when we have wetland delineation, where we have like a housing situation, and then we might have a disturbance because of like a contamination because of a septic system? Is that part of this, or do I need to ask you that question in a, in a different space?
It's, if there's contamination from a septic system, I mean, it would, and it were in a wetland, I suppose part of the fix might, might be to actually move it out of a wetland area, because that's probably part of the reason it's failing, I mean, to begin with. But it, it would apply universally. You have to offset impacts in Washington State. Anytime you impact a resource, be it a stream, be it a wetland, be it a steep slope, anything that has buffering requirements relative to the state's regulations, you would have to offset them, regardless of whether it's in the shoreline or not. That said, if it's something integral to the operation of, of an existing facility, like a septic system, I mean, there certainly are some provisions to be made to allow for repair, management of whatever that facility might be, with the understanding impacts need to be offset. Two, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I got it. Additional question is, how often do we test, partner, you know, to test our, in the city, you know, septic systems, and how do we partner with the county to get reports from them around?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, that, that might be better directed to our Public Works Department, but we don't have a whole lot of septic systems in the city. Most, most structures are connected to municipal sewer. We, we still do have some in some outlier areas, some near the Capitol Hill area on the other side of the Canyon Creek Ravine that are in city limits. There are some out in far south Shelton along Beverly, if you know where that is, Beverly California Avenue. I mean, there are some septic systems there. I'm not aware that we actually partner with them to have them tested, but the county does have a, a testing requirement for septics within the county, and that would include anything they regulate in the city. If those septic systems fail, generally speaking, they're required to connect the city sewer if it's within the requisite distance, which I believe is three hundred feet. If we have a sewer main and can service whatever that site might be, I believe you're required to connect if your system fails. So, I mean, that's arguably an incentive to keep it maintained and functioning properly.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Donna, shall we pause for thirty seconds?
Yes, I'll start the timer.
There's a thirty-second delay between what's brought in.
We talked about having the Jeopardy song during this.
Uh-huh.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that was thirty seconds.
All right. So no one has signed up. All right. Would you please give us our first reading of ordinance number one-nine-seven-one-dash-zero-six-two-one?
Yes. Ordinance number one-nine-seven-one-dash-zero-six-two-one. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, relating to land use, amending Chapter twenty-one-point-six-four critical areas protection, and Chapters two, five, six, seven, and eight of the City of Shelton Shoreline Master Program.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that after having had a public hearing and taking, and taking public testimony on the matter, we place ordinance number one-nine-seven-one-dash-zero-six-two-one on the July sixth action agenda for final action.
Second. All right. We have any further questions for Jason before I go on? All right. We have a motion and a second that after having held a public hearing and taken public testimony on the matter, we place ordinance number one-nine-seven-one-dash-zero-six-two-one on the July sixth action agenda for final action and adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Public hearing is closed. I'm gonna resume our regular meeting. The first action item this evening is a resolution regarding six-year transportation improvement program. City Engineer Ken Gill has a detail.
Yeah.
Hi, Ken.
Good evening. Council, it's good to see your faces today, and the sun is shining out there, so the only thing better is we start holding council meetings outdoors when it gets sunnier, but I don't know if I can get Councilmember Knighton to go for that. So tonight, I'm here to do my second presentation on the six-year transportation improvement plan. So I haven't changed anything in the packet from our last presentation. Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember, let's just got a couple of good projects that we talked about, and we've, since then, we've met with our consultants doing our local road safety plan. So look for me to present that, our crash data back to you, and some safety projects through that process. But tonight, this is the six-year tip. I'm recommending that you approve it, so they can get it submitted to the state.
All right. Has anyone signed up for public comment, Donna?
No one has signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Shall we pause for thirty?
Yes, we should.
I think we could pull one up, right?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that was thirty seconds.
All right, thank you. Could you please give us a reading of Resolution number one-one-nine-nine-dash-zero-four-two-one?
Yes. Resolution number one-one-nine-nine-dash-zero-four-two-one. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, adopting the comprehensive six-year transportation improvement program for the City of Shelton for the years twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-seven.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution number one-one-nine-nine-dash-zero-four-two-one and the six-year TIP attachment.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Gill? If not, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number one-one-nine-nine-dash-zero-four-two-one and the six-year TIP attachment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council, and thank you, Donna, for doing the public hearing at our last meeting, and approving, and looking over my shoulder as I change my packet items for this pack of meetings. I appreciate your help with that.
All right. Oh, are you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have another item for Mr. Gill. A resolution to award the twenty-twenty-one chip seal project.
So again, this is a project, second time around. So with Brooke Kilt's help, we put the small works roster to Shelton's use, and got a low bid of just over a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars to put chip seal on North Thirteenth Street from just about the hospital to Wallace-Neeland. So we've got a, with your approval of this, we've got a Zoom pre-con scheduled with Sierra Santa Fe tomorrow at eleven, and are looking forward to getting their submittals approved and getting a start date from them. So once I have a schedule in hand, I'll bring that back to you, but I've been coordinating with the hospital. So their requirement is to keep one lane open at all times, so we're gonna work with our contractor to do that. So we have the minimal effect on them. So with that, I recommend that you adopt this resolution and award this contract to Sierra Santa Fe.
All right. Well, let's pause for thirty seconds. All right, thank you. Would you give us a reading of Resolution number twelve-hundred-dash-zero-four-two-one?
Yes. These are getting longer and longer as we go, by the way. Resolution number one-two-zero-zero-dash-zero-four-two-one. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works contract with Sierra Santa Fe for the completion of the twenty-twenty-one chip seal project.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution number one-two-zero-zero-dash-zero-four-two-one and award the twenty-twenty-one chip seal contract to Sierra Santa Fe for their bid amount of one-thirty-seven thousand eight-eighty-five.
All right. Any questions, Ken, on this?
Thanks for getting it rolling.
I'd just like to say, you know, I'm so glad that we started trying to take care of what we have by doing these projects. It's so important, Donna, to keep this rolling.
We've got some great projects coming up.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number twelve-hundred-dash-zero-four-two-one and award the twenty-twenty-one chip seal contract to Sierra Santa Fe for their bid amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us. Here he is, about Ferguson Water Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. Before you tonight, you have a resolution for the purchase and the sole sourcing with Ferguson Water Works and for the census meters for the project, and we're really excited about the project. I gave a presentation to you last fall about it. I was here at the last meeting. I gave you a supplemental presentation, and the project's in design and underway. We want to pick up the parts and get them on order. There's some significant lead time for the parts right now. There's just, they take a lot of pieces to put them together, and there's a price increase coming from the vendor, so I'm getting to you a little early to get the parts for the project to save some money. There have been no changes since my last presentation to you, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Before we start that, let's pause for thirty seconds. All right, thank you. Can you give us a reading for Resolution number one-two-zero-one-dash-zero-five-two-one?
Yes. Resolution number one-two-zero-one-dash-zero-five-two-one. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, declaring the purchase of census water meters, telemetry equipment, parts, and components to be clearly and legitimate, legitimately limited to a sole source purchase through Ferguson Water Works, waiving competitive bidding requirements for such purchases, and authorizing the purchase of necessary components for the water meter AMI system upgrade.
All right. Do we have a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution number twelve-one-two-zero-one-dash-zero-five-two-one as presented and authorize the city manager to execute purchase orders necessary for the water meter AMI project.
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions for Jay tonight? Oh, Megan?
This, so this was, this is step one, and then we're gonna have a step two. Do we know when we're going to set it up to where all the work can be done here in the office, rather than, than drive around to the meters?
Yeah, that's a great question. The, the parts order is what we're doing tonight, and the lead time is about eighteen weeks, possibly even more. There's a chip shortage right now, of all things, that go on the water meters. So, yeah, that's just the way it is. But at least we're holding the, the price, they're honoring their price. We're moving forward with that. We also have to buy lids and boxes. A lot of the boxes are too small, the lids aren't configured right, that sort of thing. So the backorder time on that is, isn't as bad, so we'd be coming to you with that next. Most likely, we'll be lumped together with the contractor to actually go do the work. It's a lot of work to get to, you know, nearly four thousand locations, to dig up boxes, put in new meters, put in new lids, and all that. So we're anticipating that work will probably come into you in the fall, because the lead time for the meters is so far out that we'll probably wait and bid at early fall, sort of thing, and have the bids come in, you know, sometime in, around Thanksgiving or something, is what we're thinking. We really want the parts on hand before we say go contractor. What I'm really worried about is securing a contractor, and then they have nothing to do, because we don't have the parts at our, our yard. So we really wanted to try to make sure they're being delivered or will be delivered before we get the, the contractor bid secured.
Yeah, and then I think to your question about the telemetry antennas, next year is when we plan to purchase those antennas, if I remember correctly, and so we won't have anybody that, the step we're taking now will make us much more efficient than we have been, but then that next step, when we move to the radio-based reads coming directly to the civic center, that will step our game up even more.
That, that's correct. Manager Knighton got that. We're worried about going from the technology we're at right now, which is very minimalistic, to the AMI system. It's a really big leap, and the city that I was previously at, we had issues with technology upgrades, so we want to go to drive-by radio read, do that for some months, get the routes down. There's a laptop in the car. We pick up all the readings, get that to finance, download, very similar to the way we're doing now, the bills go out, right? Then the radio system will come online, and then we can decide when to convert that all over to finance, and the public works folks aren't out reading meters anymore. The good thing is about training for the drive-by radio read is if the AMI system runs into problems, we can always, we, the signal for the drive-by radio read will still be out there, we'll be able to go do that, so our people will already be trained. We'll already have those processes in place. Lastly, we can open all the lids again, right, and read, read them that way. So we'll have three ways at that point, so there was some reasoning to wait on the, the antenna portion of the project.
All right.
I just wanted to share, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to walk by a, a box the other day, and there was a puck on top of it.
day and there was a puck on top of it. And I knew what it was, thank you, Jay. And for your sake, Kathy, I jumped on top of it three times and it was just funny. There you go. I should have done a video, right?
Where did you see that?
I was actually in Olympia.
Oh, Olympia.
And they have them there, so. And they say, yeah, you know, honestly, I would have never, ever known what it was until Jay had educated us on what they are. And I would have never even, I would have walked either on a rank pied or on top of it or whatever and would have never even thought about it. So. I'm glad you tested it. There you go. Your test done. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jay. I for one am really looking forward to this project. City of Shelton is moving with this new technology. And even though I don't understand new technology, I'm excited about bringing Shelton into the 21st century, really.
Well, if I brought in one of the old meter dials and had everybody read it, everybody would come up with a different reading. There is special training. Some of the dials are different, Jeff. I don't know if you've seen the different dials that are out there, but is it reading gallons or cubic feet?
I don't know if this is common or not, but when the house is quiet and the sprinklers come on, I can hear the meter. Click, 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 click.
Yeah, these new meters, there's no moving parts.
Yeah.
They're all magnetic.
So you're going to keep one for our museum, right? And so is it going to be in a box and sit down in the, or is it just?
It's going to be exactly what you see right now, maybe with a new lid, maybe with a new box because it wasn't big enough. And they might disturb around there, dig it up a little bit with a black puck on top of it or a disc.
All right.
Look at our car antenna, those little car antennas.
Yeah, but very, very narrow profile, very small.
You know, as we're moving forward, we've got a lot of things that can go into the city museum.
All right. Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 1201 dash 0521 as presented and to authorize city manager to execute purchase order necessary for the water meter AMI project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on as soon as Dawn is ready there to administration reports. And Community Communications Specialist Mary Ricker is going to speak to us, has an update for us about the MyCivic app. Come on, Mary.
She not out there?
Yeah, she's coming.
Oh, there she is.
Sorry, I was timing it from the lobby. So I was a little off my timing. But good evening, Council. My name's Mary Ricker. I'm the communications specialist for the city. And I'm here to tell you about our new app. Our app launched today. It's in the App Store. Anybody can download it. You just, yep, you can just, on Android or your iPhones, if you just search Shelton Wa, it'll pop up. It'll have the city logo. So anybody can download it. The handout that you have in front of you is two-sided and it kind of has an explainer about what you see when you open up the app and descriptions on the side of what the different menu items mean. I won't walk through all of them because you've seen all of them previously. But the most important thing to note about this is it's a living thing. We're totally planning on expanding it and changing out the photo, which was taken by our Admin Services Director, Michelle Sutherland. Big shout out to her because she did a lot of work on this as well as Leandra Sharp, our HR analyst. But on the back is perhaps the more exciting, which is the report and issue or 311 feature that we're adding to the app. This is for residents to report non-urgent, non-emergency issues that you see around your neighborhood, things like parks, code enforcement issues, public works issues, all of that you can report using the app. And we hope that this will give us a more accurate picture of what's going on in the community because for a lot of people, they don't want to pick up the phone and call. That's a barrier for people to report. So we're hoping that this will be a good alternative for people. And at the bottom under the box, this is what happens next. It kind of walks through just that, what happens next when you report a non-urgent issue to the city. But I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, this is a living thing. So some of them we're figuring out still. So.
Go ahead, Jay. So when people report, are we tracking who reports or is it just an open report?
Yeah. So you can choose to put your contact information. So you can put a website and you'll receive like an email receipt of your issue. Or you can report anonymously, but you can still view your reports in the app. Each report is assigned a number and staff can go in and see each report individually. They can see them on a map. So you can see if a certain neighborhood has had a lot of the same types of things reported. You can see that.
So when you're saying I can see it on the app, is that because it's open on the app to the general public so I could go on there and see every report?
Yeah, you can see, I believe, every report. You can't see people's contact info. That's private. But you can see, like, you can put in a specific address if you know it, or you can put, like, if the bathroom needs to be cleaned at Nealon Park or something, you can drag kind of a pin over to Nealon Park and drop it on there and that will be the address attached to it. So, of course.
All right.
Cool.
Very good. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Jeff Knighton for his city manager report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Mary didn't want to make the joke that I told her to make, which is we're providing paper handouts for a new digital platform. But I think we have to recognize that and we couldn't necessarily get it up on the screen. So we do recognize the irony. However, we do want to get these technology upgrades out there. I know we've been talking about this for quite a while and you're going to see the pace of this start to accelerate. We have done a tremendous amount of work in the background with Mary, Leandra Sharp, that she also mentioned when Mary's not working on government affairs stuff with Mr. Nichols, who you heard from earlier. She's communicating with the public and helping to develop these things. Our IT department with Tim, who sits back in the back and makes sure our meetings are handled without a hitch, has also done a tremendous amount of work on these projects. And as I mentioned, you're going to see the pace of this, the implementation start to pick up. A lot of the foundation's been built, which is what we focused on over the last couple of years. Nextly, next, I wanted to mention, this hopefully will be the last time your council meeting is set up like this. So at our next meeting, assuming everything stays the way that it's planned right now from the governor's office, we'll be able to go back to the format we were in before. So you'll all be able to see each other. I know that's, can sometimes be difficult when you're debating subjects that are before you. So that will happen. Fingers crossed, but I think we're well on our way. Next, I did get a email from a lady with a message that I thought was pretty important. So I'll go ahead and share that from here and we'll also share it on our social media platforms. And that's, that it's about to get hot. So just remember that if you have your dogs in the car, if it gets too hot, make sure, make sure you address that. Don't leave dogs in the hot car or children or anything else because that can be incredibly harmful and potentially fatal. And lastly, there was a discussion brought up during our briefings last week regarding the format in which the council desires to get information from staff. How you, how would you like to receive it? Briefings, we do those on the off weeks, as you all know. And we sit down with, or I sit down with one or two, or I'm sorry, two or three of you to discuss various issues going on in the city and try to build consensus in that, that way. But kind of wanted the council to have a little bit of a conversation tonight about how you'd like to receive information from us. An alternative way to do it is an email from me each Friday with various issues that are happening in the city and then soliciting any input, if you have any, from each of you. For issues, major public, major policy issues and for something like that, a good example is the stormwater ordinance that council adopted at our last meeting. We would schedule a work session, probably a two-hour work session on, on off Tuesdays. So this meeting tonight, the next Tuesday, whatever that is, we would schedule a two-hour work session. For other issues that are public policy issues but aren't as significant, and that's kind of a moving target, but something like the AMI project that we were just talking about, we would schedule a work session for an hour prior to the start of a regular council meeting. So it wouldn't be on an off Tuesday. It'd be on the same evening. Or any other formats. But I would very much like to hear your thoughts on how you would like to receive information. It doesn't matter to me. I just want to make sure council has all the information to make the decisions that they think best.
I mean, I currently like the way it is now. I mean, you're our only employee. I like sitting down and looking you in the face and having conversations with you and being frank, where I wouldn't feel as comfortable doing that in the whole group.
Okay.
Well, I'll say that I tend to actually lend the other side of this. And I have expressed to our manager Knighton a few times now that not only do I feel it takes an enormous amount of his time, which I appreciate and provides us with great feedback, but I think that the more opportunities we have to have robust conversations as a group of seven and really have that perspective heard, because while Eric brings up some really wonderful points when I have a meeting with him, it's going to be different points than James or Megan or Kathy or Kevin. And so I think the more that we can have those conversations as a group as a whole and in the public eye, to me, I feel more comfortable moving forward in that format.
Well, I'm not saying that, that work sessions are out of the picture. I'm just saying I like our, or my monthly briefings with you because we can be frank and we can look you in the eye. And you are our only employee. So I do like those, that, or the briefing. Work sessions are great. We want to have work sessions. I'm all for that as well for big projects. And so we can all.
And if I could just say real quick, none of this is intended to limit your access to me. You all, you all know that you can call me anytime or stop by my office.
We will.
We appreciate that.
You don't want a two-hour scheduled visit.
I, I wonder if there's a, I don't know, a mix of, you know, continue on with our meetings the way they are. And I'll tell you why I like that in a minute here. But, and then have a work study once a month or something. Anyway, the reason I like the one-on-one, I think I get more out of it, number one. But number two, I don't know, I just kind of got used to it, I guess. But if we have a work session on a Tuesday, would it be daytime?
No, I think in order to respect all of the council members' time and previous commitments, we would do it in the afternoon. Yeah.
If it's at, if it's at five or six o'clock, most of us, I don't know, have a meeting at, I have one at four already. You know, I don't know, it's, are we going to be, are we going to be cramming too much into a Tuesday, I wonder? I don't know. And whoever takes over my seat will have the same four o'clock meeting that I have now, if they want it. So I don't know.
I like to make having a mix of that because I really enjoy sitting down. I have with Joe when I was with Joe and now with Kevin to talk and we can talk more freely.
And yeah, I think with all the things that you bring to the table, that's going to be a super long email, right? I mean, it could be.
It could be. It depends on what's going on, but sure.
So, yeah, I'm up for more discussion on it. You want to do it now or?
I feel, I definitely am pushing for this because I'd like us to be more together as a council when we're talking about these things. Because just like that, when I switched from being with Eric in a briefing to being with Joe in a briefing, I'm getting completely different things and they both have validity. And there's a big disconnect that happens when we aren't together as a council to actually discuss these things. Because I feel like I've put my integrity on the line more than once because I've met with Eric and talked about something and agreed with him and then had my mind changed in my council briefing. I didn't get to spit that back out to Eric. So Eric thinks now I'm this two-faced person because I changed my tune because, I'm not saying he does, but just I flip-flopped on things more than once because I'm getting different perspectives.
We won't recognize you.
Exactly. I don't want to be seen. I was kidding. But that's why I'm pushing for these because I think, I think it brings us together more as a council. And we need to speak, we need to speak freely anywhere we are. We're public servants. We shouldn't be able to hide anywhere and not speak freely.
That's for sure.
So I'm for those. And I think it's more important for us to be together as a group so we can be united and actually hash through these things and not come to it and not understand why I'm voting no when everybody thought I was voting yes.
Yeah.
Or vice versa.
Well, then we can go back the way the commission did it. We have a city meeting this Tuesday and next meeting we have a study session. So we have two meetings a month.
And that's more what I was looking towards.
I'm going to be calling you more.
Yeah. So I, based on what I'm hearing, I mean, I am willing to and I'm more than happy to still have study sessions. But then any council member that wants to can come in and sit down and talk with me, call me beforehand or just stop by. You know, I'll make time, obviously. But, you know, more than happy to do that if that's the direction the council wants to go. And then we can have those conversations as long as it's not four or more of you at one time, three or less.
The other benefit I feel that we get from this too is that our community gets to see more of this actually in action. We come to these meetings with decisions made. They don't get to see that process. If we do these things and we're doing this in public like we, like, like I feel we should be, then we get to work through this process in public and our constituents get to see how our minds actually work, how this council actually works, that we're not just rubber stamping things out, that we have disagreements, that there's robust conversation happening behind the scenes, not just we're being handed something and, okay. Because that's a pretty big, there's a pretty big portion of our community that feels that that's what we do. Because that's all they see.
That's all they see, right?
They see us show up here, we stamp it and we're gone.
They don't see what's going on a couple of weeks before.
And I feel like there's a lot of value in that for our community and for us. It holds us accountable to.
I mean, I didn't agree with you guys two weeks ago.
Yeah. No, you didn't at all. And.
So, I mean, there's not a rubber stamp. So.
No, no, no. And I agree with that. And I'm not saying that's what we do because it's not at all. But the perception of it and optics matter. And.
Well.
Because, and that was going to be my point is that, you know, I enjoy our weekly briefings. I enjoy our study sessions. And I think there's value in the public seeing the process. They don't really get to see us debate.
No.
And we do debate. I'm pretty sure I might have slammed that one up.
A couple of times.
We debate in pairs. We debate talking with Jeff, but there isn't a conversation where the seven of us are in the room. And I say, you know, that changes my mind. And Erica didn't think about that. And Kevin, I'm glad you brought that up. And so I think that is the piece that while staff does a great job of giving us information to make decisions within our own minds, and there are small conversations, I think we're missing that bigger opportunity to have that conversation as a group.
Yeah. And being able to share the feedback that we're getting collectively from our constituents. Because I also think that there may be a perception out in our community that we don't talk to the community also. And we, we're not bringing their voices to the table. So I think that if we had a situation where we're doing more of that and sharing more in group, that would probably be better.
You have any comments on this, Kathy?
I, I will do, either one is fine. I do like having, but I, I'm on Jeff's ear most of the time with the telephone. So, but I've come over and sat down with you long, just one-on-one.
Absolutely.
And, but I do like to debate. I do. And while we were all kind of dysfunctional during the COVID and the Zoom meetings, you know, I was really looking forward to all of us being together again because I think we work well together. I was really looking forward to all of us being together again, because I think we work well together. And we talk about things, and so, either way, it's fine.
So, so what I'll do then is, just to make sure that I understood correctly, I'll start sending out emails, say, every, you know, Friday, right around lunchtime. And then, you know, with operational issues and those types of things, where we are on various programs. And if anybody has any feedback, let me know, give me a call, stop by, whatever, email me. And then when another topic comes up, and I can, we can take this opportunity now to go through the looking ahead real quick. When the opportunity comes up that is a, a more significant public policy issue, then we can schedule a work session, and I'm thinking at this point, for our next meeting on seven-six, and just a quick reminder, that one I will not be in attendance for. So there's not really anything there that I think would, would require, be a good idea for a work session. But if there's something that you do want to have a work session on, tell me, you know, I'm more than happy to do that. For the next one, a potential for the water comprehensive plan, that may very well be one that a work session is warranted for an hour before the meeting on July 20th. Those types of things is what I would be looking at, to say that's probably a work session. And then when we do the, the sewer averaging for summer consumption, that's probably one that might require a two-hour session. Now, the only thing this really does is it kind of extends the process a little bit, so instead of making a decision in July on that, you'll be making it in August, so it'll take a little bit longer to make decisions, but that, you know, that's, if that's an objective that the council wants to see, then I'm more than happy to do it that way.
Okay, well, I'm confused now, so we just heard from several people that they want us to get together, now you're gonna send emails out every other week, or maybe, or maybe not have a study session, no, we either, if we want to go this direction, we have a study session every other Tuesday, and meeting every, so we have a meeting, you know, every week. Because it doesn't make any sense, you're, they're saying they want communication and debate in this room, and you're saying you'll send us emails out, we may or may not have a study session on certain issues, no.
I don't.
We're gonna do this, we should have a study session every week, or every other week, we should be together, you know, a meeting, study session, meeting, study session. Am I making sense?
You are, I.
That's what they're saying, they want.
Sure, but there's just some things on here that, well, I mean, we can talk about whatever's on the agenda, sure, I don't, that's fine.
I just, I just meant, that's what, what they said they wanted, and you're saying we're gonna have our briefings through email, and we may or may not have a study session, so that doesn't make any sense.
Well, and I think Jeff's point, and correct me if I'm wrong, but is that there's some topics which are administrative, housekeeping, et cetera, which aren't necessarily policy decisions that would drive debate, and so, I mean, I tend to agree, I'd rather have the meeting scheduled, and if we don't have discussion for that week because there's no new items, it's always easier to cancel a meeting and take something off your calendar than not to have an opportunity to have those conversations. So the regularity, I mean, I see where you're coming with that.
There's one, one issue with that, is if we advertise that because there will be a quorum, we have to, you may not, but we will have to show up just to make, you know, let people know that that's, there won't be a meeting tonight.
Sure.
So, you know, if, if council wants to have a, a meeting every Tuesday evening, we'll do that.
How long does staff have to stay to address public, if, you know, cancel meetings?
Six fifteen.
But we shouldn't, because we shouldn't cancel meetings, we should have those meetings in this forum, so.
Just like our briefings, I mean, it's just replacing them.
So they should, no matter what, if there's three things you want to mention to it, then we have a twenty-five minute meeting, it takes me a long suit on. I mean, I, I like the old way, but what I'm hearing from most of, the majority who's here, is that they want in-person debate on, on every, instead of a briefing. So if that's what they want, then we should have a study session every week. And I don't think it needs to be six o'clock, or we could set it up at any time, I mean, it could be a ten o'clock in the morning study session, I mean. I mean, they had them at two o'clock in the past, and then this evening it was at six, well, actually, it went around. Five o'clock, six o'clock, and seven o'clock meeting at one time.
There are municipal jurisdictions that have study sessions during the day and have business meetings during the day. But from what I understand, council is more interested in transparency, and doing that in the evening is probably the best way to do it.
So then, if there's something that needs to be discussed, we would have an executive.
Real estate or something like that, one of the exceptions.
Yeah, I'm a, personally, I'm a, a little bit on Eric's side on this, just, because that's what I'm used to, I guess. I know we used to do, I'm trying to remember, about four years ago, but we used to have a meeting every Monday down here, and at seven o'clock, and we got away from that, because it ran too late, and we didn't, we didn't need a council meeting every Monday. Now, I know that that commission is gone that did that, but I'd be willing to try it, you know, like, like my old coach used to say, we're gonna try this in the third quarter and see what happens.
And we're already allocating, you know, two hours at least, you know, for meetings every week. So if, if, if we're just reallocating the time to a Tuesday, you know, evening, then it's not really the time, you know, taking any more time off.
No.
Adding more time into those places.
Right.
You know, it's, it's just opening the briefing stuff.
What time are we gonna do it, you know?
And I know we have a few people that are constrained by, by time, so, I mean, I, it's, it's, that's why we're opening this discussion now and talking about it. But I'm hearing that the reason that we don't want to do it is comfort and convenience, and the reason that we should do it is transparency and a better cohesiveness as a, as a group and a unit, that we're actually all on the same page. So to me, it's not even a question, because my comfort and convenience is always the last thing I consider, so.
I don't think it was comfort and convenience, but I, I think it was being able to have, have a great conversation with, with our only employee, and then.
Okay, well, the, the words that I heard were, it's the way I've always done it, and so to me, the optics of that are comfort and convenience. And that's the whole reason of being together as a council, so we, we actually can give them the true vision of it, and not just the optics of the few words that we say that they hear, because that matters.
I see what you're saying, I just, what do we?
I'm not here to attack or insult.
What is a good time to do it?
And I also wanna.
Six o'clock?
I also want to say that we are missing one council person.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
I think my recommendation to the fellow council members would be that we table this conversation, and so we can have the full conversation with our other council member and finish the debate, and then figure out what the full consensus is.
Correct, now, now it's out there.
Yeah.
So we, council does not wish to make this change yet.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you won't, well, I suppose you can, but we won't bring this topic up again, I don't think, on the July sixth meeting, because I won't be here.
Won't be here.
Yeah, so we can put this on, I can just make this part of my City Manager's Report similar to the way I did tonight on July 20th, is that comfortable? Okay.
And then by that time, Joe will be back, or we're gonna have a conversation.
Yeah.
Well, I have to cut, you'll have to come in business and action, because you have to change your policy, right?
That's right, and we also will want to put a time limit on it, because my understanding is the work sessions before I arrived sometimes ran to four or more hours, and I don't think that's productive for anybody.
No, it's not the goal.
I don't remember that, but two o'clock meetings, I don't.
I think we definitely need to put a time limit on it, we can always extend the time, twenty minutes if we have to or something.
I envision a replication of our weekly briefings in this room with all of us together, that's fine.
And you could do business items on the work sessions as well, move those to action.
I don't want to, I don't, would rather not go down that road, because that's a slippery slope as far as public process is concerned. Because while work sessions are a public meeting, the public generally does not interact with councilor or make comments. So I don't, that's, while technically I think it would be okay, I, I just think that's a slippery slope into making decisions at a work session and not a public hearing, so.
Although, there are some presentations that may be better suited for this sort of a format, because sometimes it is just from staff to council, and quite frankly, we aren't moving into business and action, and trying to keep those things a bit more delineated wouldn't be the worst thing in the world.
Sure, it's just a time, yeah.
All right.
So I'll make sure this is on July 20th, but in the meantime, we still have your scheduled briefings for, I think, the week of the twenty-eighth, for the July sixth meeting, and then whatever the one after that is, and after Fourth of July weekend.
And for the record, I will also say that there have been a couple of briefings that I haven't been able to make, and Jeff has recapped an email for me, and they've been very thorough and to the point where I can comprehend and be able to ask questions. If that does give you any, good job. But I think it's really important for us to still be in more contact with these other face-to-face than always an email or apps, it's just as, you know.
Yep.
And what about, now how would, when you, you brief us, you have sometimes some executive comments or issues that you brief us on? You won't be able to do that at a study session.
You won't be getting those, unless you come to see me.
So you could, you could say to us?
Oh, if some, if there's a matter that I think you ought to know about, I'll, you know, I'll let you know that we should, we should have a conversation.
Well, or convene an executive session when it's appropriate, so.
When it's appropriate, absolutely.
Could Joe speak back though, too, so that we can.
Yeah.
All in our discussion.
So from now on, it's as is until July 20th.
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion for tonight, guys? That was a good discussion, by the way. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at six o'clock, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-three.